All right. Good afternoon from the Peoria Journal-Star where we're continuing our series of editorial board candidate interviews with at-large Peoria City Council candidates. Today, we have with us John Kelly. I'm Chris Kergard, Associate Editor, and Dennis Anderson, Executive Editor.
Good afternoon.
John, thank you for being here. We like to start these out by asking candidates first and foremost why it is they're running and tell us a little bit about themselves.
Well, the reason I'm running, I've been involved in city politics really for about 40 years. I was never able to run for office because of my profession, but I've been in and out of City Hall for a long time and have had the economics of the city as my primary reason for darkening their door. And I put forward a number of ideas, some of which the council has acted on. Any that the council acted on worked, by the way. But so I've been very involved. It's something that I think now that I'm retired, I believe I can do and do well for the citizens of Peoria.
Okay. Let me follow up with that, too. You were a candidate two years ago for the unexpired at-large terms, and you've returned as a candidate now. I want to ask you what you learned from that first race that you hope to bring into the second race on either proposals or approach or anything else?
Well, frankly, I don't really know. I have some ideas about what I might have learned, but they may be wrong. One thing that we did not do last time that I think about quite a bit is that we didn't go on television. The two folks who won in that last weekend before the election went on television and they buried me. Whereas I had done very well in the primary on Election Day. I won the vote on Election Day of the primary. I don't think I was overconfident. We kept working, but I was surprised at the outcome. I'm not sure that's it, or perhaps there were some other factors I'm not aware of. I wish I knew for sure.
What's changed in the city in the past two years, then?
Well, overall, I don't think a whole lot has. That is, we continue down the same road we've been on for quite a few years. The status quo reigns in Peoria, and we keep trying to do things that economically don't work very well or don't work at all. We get a lot of our ideas from other older northern cities. Those ideas don't seem to work very well in those cities, and when we bring them here, they don't work very well here.
Give us a couple of examples.
Well, we have a high dependence upon sales tax, and will do about anything to get a new sales tax generator into town. Sales taxes are very much to the advantage of City Hall, which is why City Hall likes them, or likes the sales tax generators. But retailers, God bless them, are not primary wealth creators. We make our environment rather hostile for folks who are the primary creators of wealth. If you have a climate that is amenable to capital and amenable to high-wage labor, you don't really have to worry about retail showing up. They'll be here. Our dependence upon retail is kind of going in the other direction right now in that we are losing a number of significant retailers. But we're doing nothing to encourage or to break down the barriers that we have to capital investment. And without that, I think we just continue on the status quo. We continue to run into the same problems every year. We continue to raise taxes. We continue to cut services because we can't seem to get out of this rut of doing things in our city, economic things in our city, that consistently do not live up to their promises.
So these good head-of-household jobs that need to be created here, what does City Hall need to do to either encourage conditions or induce those companies to locate here?
Well, first, let me answer the second part of that first. Peoria has about 7,000 businesses. Now, if through regulatory reform, which is in the city's control, and perhaps a restructuring of our existing tax system, which is also in City Hall's control, those 7,000 businesses, if we can make life a little bit better for them, the effect of that is probably greater than a big new magical employer coming to town. I mean, I'm not opposed to having a great big company show up, but you know, if that's what we're waiting for, if that's what's going to bail us out, I think we're whistling the wrong tune.
Are city regulations really so costly and burdensome on some of these businesses that they're not hiring employees or not expanding production?
Well, I can only tell you what those folks have told me because I don't have firsthand knowledge of it. I'm told that it is very difficult to deal with City Hall some of the time, especially if you want to build something in the city. There are folks, good, longtime Peoria business citizens who've just thrown up their arms and have moved across the river, across the city limits, just to get away from what they perceive, and I don't think they're crazy, what they see as is just far too burdensome regulatory climate. We have special industries that we like to pick on because they're unpopular. In today's Journal-Star, as a matter of fact, there was a story about getting more revenue from
Video gambling.
Video gambling, something I'm not very familiar with. But nevertheless, we pick on people like that because it's a minority. We will pick on landlords because they're a minority. We have a landlord registration system which came about supposedly because we had declining, a lot of rental housing was in decline in Peoria. So we generated a bunch of new regulations, including registration and annual meetings of these people and whatnot, and fees. Okay? We have increased the fees mightily since that time. Now, if you ask anyone at City Hall to say, "Okay, let's take this landlord registration," how has that improved rental housing in Peoria? You know what? No one knows. No one really cares. It's just a way to garner more money for City Hall and picking on a particular industry, okay, which is a very important industry in our city, okay? And I don't own any rental property either. So I think we make it very difficult, and in doing so, we depress what, we depress the potential of these thousands of businesses who are here, who are paying taxes, they're voting, these are regular Peorians. And of course, we make ourselves not very attractive to that magical big employer as well.
Okay. You're talking about tax abatements and it's a way to grow new capital. Talk about what kind of projects you foresee happening there.
Let me start with a little history. In the mid-'80s, Springfield passed an enterprise zone statute for cities within the state. Our enterprise zone at the time was our riverfront from Darst Street all the way to the McClurgge Bridge. There were a number of things cities were able to do, and the city of Peoria did a few things, and I thought that what they did was not, it was better than nothing. But one of the provisions inside that law was that the city could have a tax abatement program in the enterprise zone. And I really, really, really pushed for that hard, and ultimately, it passed unanimously. And what it said was, anyone who does anything newly taxable in the enterprise zone, you didn't have to pay taxes on that new thing for 10 years, real estate taxes I'm speaking of. That, and we got a lot of participation from the other local taxing bodies, which you needed to do. They weren't brought in automatically. But it wasn't a full tax abatement. After three and a half years, the monthly building permits in that, in the zone, were up 42%. The dollar value of those new permits on a monthly basis was up 1,008%. It was up tenfold. The city, or City Hall, it did not cost them a penny. It didn't cost a dime. All the benefit of this program went to the investor, okay? There were new jobs created. Now, you can imagine, those were good jobs. You know, those were not minimum wage jobs or anything of the sort. There were machine shops and supply houses, you know, et cetera. So that's the history, and that is a history that is repeated in any city you want to have a look at that has a general tax abatement program, not a tax abatement on this new thing that's coming to town, but in this, in this general area that needs help, that needs recapitalization. Okay, so I found, a few years ago, I found a statute, a never-used statute that Illinois had passed for cities that allows you to do that same thing in blighted residential neighborhoods. Didn't have to be commercial industrial, okay? I propose that we do that. I think a good place to start, because it's easily defined, would be a good chunk of the North Valley, from I-74, bounded by the commercial industrial area on the riverfront, bounded by the bluffs, and running out to, say, Abington, which also is a, you know
An easy divider.
Yeah, it's an easy divider. And use this statute to give tax abatement to anybody who does anything new in there. I have a feeling that there would be a great deal of new construction rehabbing, et cetera, that would happen. It would grow gradually, and it would get, it would get bigger and bigger. All the time that this goes on, and the same thing happened in the enterprise zone, the value of the land in that area begins to rise. You've got this attribute that is very encouraging. The value of the land rises. That's taxable. The only thing you're abating is tax on the new capital. Okay? So, and like in the
So no detriment to the school district or anything like that?
No, no, no. As a matter of fact, all these areas have had lower and lower and lower assessed value every year. From the first moment of a tax abatement program, the other taxing bodies are getting more revenue. It starts out small, but they're getting more revenue, not because of the new stuff that's being built, it's because the land value's going up. Land value in, across the, across 74 from downtown, land value there is less than a dollar a foot. Okay? Downtown is about $40 a foot. Most neighborhoods are $3 or $4 a foot, okay, or in some are $5 and $6 a foot, okay? This is less than a dollar. The amount of growth and value of the land in that area, the potential for it, is huge. It's terrific. It's right next to downtown. It's got a, it's got a wonderful location, okay? We, things like that cost no money. The city doesn't spend a penny on it, and they promote it, okay? But beyond that, they don't do anything, and all the benefit goes to the investor, not to City Hall.
So why have there been no takers on, not just in the city of Peoria, but across the state? Why has nobody made use of this statute?
I have an editorial. I mean, I may not be right about this. First of all, let's go back to that enterprise zone tax abatement. The Development Department of the city was against that from the very beginning. They fought it, and they lost, but they ended up killing it by 1991. They, you know, they got it off, and I don't know why. But I think the reason why is because they don't get to control it. One of their arguments was, well, who knows who's going to build in there?
To the extent that they control any permitting or special uses or variances or things like that, they would still
They would. All those rules still apply, okay? But nobody has to come to City Hall anymore hat in hand and say, "Please, can I do this?" You know? Well, yes, you can do it if you do this and do that and do this other extraordinary kinds of things. That's out. All you have to do is comply with the zoning rules and the, you know, et cetera, and you're fine. Now, I may be wrong about that. I may be wrong that that's why cities haven't taken things like this up. Tax abatement, general tax abatement is not terribly popular, but wherever it's used, it works.
I want to ask you real quickly on this, too, because you're using the North Valley as an example of it. Would you favor this just for use in those blighted or economically downtrodden areas of the city? And I ask because we've seen the Illinois enterprise zone law twisted, distorted, use whatever descriptor you want for, perverted into a way that we're using it to help subsidize growth and development of existing shopping malls, of thriving industrial areas out by the jail, chemical plants down by Mapleton right now. You would not favor this for anything but blighted, specifically blighted areas? You don't want to use this for development in greenfields?
As a matter of fact, what I think would happen is, once this took off in the North Valley, I'm fairly sure it would be successful. One of the nice things is, if it's a completely terrible idea, the city is not out a penny, okay? But if it works, I think, first of all, other older blighted neighborhoods are going to clamor for it. They're going to come down to City Hall with pitchforks or whatever, and they're going to say, "Give that to my neighborhood as well." Now, as far as I'm concerned, I would just as soon use it as liberally as possible. If the folks in the Knowles or in Noel Crest or the folks in Idlebrook or whatever want to use it, I think, God bless them, go to it. You know? What do they want to do? They want to improve their neighborhood. It doesn't cost anything, you know? And it generally raises the value of that neighborhood. So that, to me, is a lot different than the zone abuse, and I agree with you on that. I think that was, they just, well, TIFs were like that as well. TIFs were supposed to be for blighted areas, and TIFs are everywhere now, you know, and spawning their children and children's children, you know? So anyway, does that answer your question?
Yes, thanks.
I'm Irish. I tend to give long answers.
I want to ask you about something that's also been rolled out as an idea at City Hall and hasn't gotten very far, and that's the vehicle sticker fee to help cover the cost, as you had suggested, of infrastructure and roll back at the same time some of the property tax increases and other tax increases that we saw two winters back. In part, how do you get over the hurdle of enforcement ability there, which is one of the major concerns, is, you know, the people will just say, "No, I'm not going to get that sticker." And, you know, you're putting one more thing on the police department there.
Okay. First of all, can I speak first to my favorability of the sticker?
Sure, sure.
You know, taxes are necessary, okay? But what you tax and how you tax makes a big difference. Taxes, the taxes we rely on the most, sales taxes and real estate taxes, there are at least the building portion of real estate taxes, are penalty taxes. There are tax on commerce, there are tax on buildings, there are tax on maintenance, you know, and we pay the price of that. We have less commerce. We have the buildings we build unless you're tax exempt, okay? And I think it's interesting to look at tax-exempt buildings. They're very nice. They're very nice. You know, hospitals, churches, universities, okay? Those are nice buildings, okay? And then we have other kinds of buildings that are taxed. Okay. So I think we ought to try to get away from those penalty, those types of penalty taxes. There is a type of tax that has no negative economic effect, and that is a head tax, okay, where everybody pays the same. The garbage fee is a good example of a head tax. Now, nobody likes taxes. I'm not saying people are going to say, "Give me more," you know? But head taxes just don't penalize economic activity. A car sticker does not penalize economic activity, and it raises a lot of money, okay? As far as enforcement is concerned, I don't have a big opinion, except that if you go through the suburbs of Chicago, almost all of those towns, which are all contiguous, okay, they all have car stickers, and it doesn't seem to be a big enforcement problem. Now, I don't know
A vehicle sticker also gives you, gives police another reason to pull somebody over. And we've reported here many times, it's a fact, in Peoria, you're more likely to be pulled over if you're black. And if you don't have a sticker, it's another reason to be pulled over. Is there another way to raise that kind of money without, again, going after a segment of the population?
Well, yeah. I mean, I don't know that, yeah, any kind of head tax is good. A use tax is good, like the flush tax, okay? Those are much better than sales taxes or real estate taxes, okay? Now, whether our police are pulling people over because they're black, driving while black, or whatever, I can't speak to. I hear about it. I don't really know how much this goes on. I really, I'm willing to believe either side. That does not negate the other parts of my argument. The enforcement of it would be just as difficult or just as easy as it is in those other towns, in those many, many towns in Illinois that have car stickers, in the case of a car sticker. The other things, you know, the garbage fee or some other fee of that nature, household fee, I don't, you know? But anything that does not penalize economic activity, I think, is superior in raising public revenue than these penalty taxes that we seem to love so much.
How much outreach have you done to in the East Bluff or on the South Side? How much you know about the concerns that the people have there?
I don't know. Probably not that much. I do a lot of volunteering, mostly in 61605. That doesn't necessarily give me great insight. These areas need economic activity. They need to be recapitalized. They need good jobs. I think my program is the way for that to happen, but indirectly, okay? All these direct help things that we do, I think they're very well intentioned. They don't seem to ultimately alleviate the problem. Growth would alleviate the problem. Here's an example. Houston, Texas, and Chicago, Illinois are about the same sized cities, okay? Houston, Texas, has a significant minority population and a significant Hispanic population. Okay? Houston has 220 police officers per 100,000 people. Chicago has 550 police officers per 100,000, two and a half times as many policemen or police officers, I'm sorry. And they can't control the crime that's up there, okay? Houston is growing like topsy, and they just don't seem to have these problems, not just with minorities, just general crime problems. And minorities, you know, you read some of the statements by some of these local preachers and, that is, black preachers or black politicians or whatever, they're all in with the growth. They're not all in with saying, "Hey, we're not being treated very well." I'm sure that it happens once in a while. I'm sure it does. But growth cures most of these, not cures, diminishes most of these problems. Where are the big problems? They're in cities that aren't growing. You know, in the 24/7 Wall Street thing, when it came out the first time, and we were number one, if you went through the top 10 or the bottom 10, whichever way you, cities in the country, nine out of the 10 were these older northern cities, and there were no growth cities in that survey. I mean, in those, having those bad numbers, no growth cities at all. I mean, what's the deal with growth cities? They've got opportunities. They've got recapitalizations going on. They've got, they've got this kind of stuff. Let's go there. And I don't know that any of these cities are doing any more or less than we're doing relative to our size with minority problems, but the problems they have are not as bad as the problems we have.
I want to follow up a little on that, too, John, and ask you, accepting the premise that you're able to get past any of these growth policies and get them implemented, there's a lag of a couple of years' time before you begin to see the positive benefits of those things. Peoria has just come off of a year where it tied the modern history record for homicides in the city. In the short term, until any of those growth policies begin to really begin to show impact in some of these neighborhoods that see these difficulties, not only with unemployment but with higher crime, what more do you think the city law enforcement needs to be doing to address the violence and the homicides that are happening in the city? One retiring member of the council has suggested officers need to adopt a stop and frisk policy.
Well, I wouldn't be totally opposed to that, but I don't think, look, I think what we're doing is almost as much as you can do. There may be some tweaks over here, some tweaks over there, but I don't, you know, I mean, look at Chicago. Chicago has 2.5 million people. There are a lot of smart people in Chicago, okay? And they can't seem to figure this out, okay? I think we tend to go at it in the wrong way. I think if we end up with growth, this will diminish most of these problems. And I would differ with you a little bit on the idea And I would differ with you a little bit on the idea that it's going to take a while. You know, as soon as we lay on a tax abatement, say, area, let's say, on the near north, all right? Instantly, those land values are going to go up, instantly. You know, the city now is worried, oh gosh, we've got all these, I'm sorry, we've got all these vacant lots, we've got all, you know, all this stuff. This will, I think, be a net benefit to the city. They'll be able to sell them off or lease them.
And, and that certainly helps construction in the neighborhoods, but, you know, the, the jobs that need to come with that are, are a whole other, whole other angle for the, the people in each of those communities, right?
Well, yeah. In, in other words, we've got a fairly low unemployment rate right now.
But a fairly high unemployment rate in, in those downtrodden areas.
Right. So, if we really start the unloaders and start the, the framing and start the, you know, all, all that stuff, we're going to need jobs. We're, we're going to need people to fill jobs. And one of the nice things about construction jobs is that you go all the way from low skill to high skill, okay? And those people that have some experience, if, if the, if this industry is expanding, okay? We're going to need to pull in more inexperienced people and start teaching them the trade, okay? I think that the, this is a jobs program that actually ends up getting people to the middle class. Most of our jobs programs are well-intentioned, but they, they don't really work very well, especially for those folks who are unskilled and, and kind of stuck in place, you know, in, in many of these neighborhoods. This is, this is the neighborhood where I live and they're, and they're, and they're building something right over here and they're building something else right over there and, you know, I'm going to go over and I'm going to ask them if they need anybody, you know? Or they, they may have to put up signs and say, we need people. I, I, I think that'd be nice.
Say you're elected?
Yes.
And...
I'm elected.
All right, you're elected? And you're looking at, you're looking around the dais and you're saying a lot of them are just living in the status quo. How do you change that?
I think that the people who are on our city council right now, I think they're all there for the right reasons. I, I truly do. I'm not just, this is in platitude time, okay? They're all there because they want good things for our city, okay? They, they, they want a better city than what we have. They're tired of being trustees in bankruptcy, you know? I think with these ideas, and, and I've, I have done this before, not consistently, you know, but I have done this, or I've talked the council into doing some of these odd things that work, okay? So, I'm, I'm fairly confident that, that the council will come along with these, with many of these things. Maybe not as fast as I want, but they'll, they'll come along. I'm not, I'm not real concerned about that.
If, if you do end up sitting on the council, you'll of course have one employee who reports directly to you. What's your assessment of how Patrick Urick has been doing as city manager?
I like Patrick Urick. I think he, I think he does a good job and works hard. I think City Hall is very stuck in this older northern city municipal government environment. And I think Patrick also would like to get out from under and really be in charge of a city that's, that's really growing. I, I, I don't talk to Patrick that much. We've, we've only spoken, I don't know, since Patrick has been the, the city manager, I think we've spoken three times maybe, you know? So, so he's not one of my, I, I speak to the council people a lot more than I speak to, to Patrick. But I, I don't see any real problem there. I think he's, he, and, and he also does what he's told. You know, I mean, he's not the boss, the council's the boss. So, the council says, well, we need more revenue. Well, we need, you know, we need to, you know, we need to cut services. We need, you know, okay, Patrick, you come back and, and show us how we can do that. And he does, okay? Well, gosh, maybe we can give him some other things to look at and, and I think he'll, I think, I think he'll, he'll do fine. I think he's, I think we're all kind of victims of just the status quo, gosh, we're, everything is, you know, things aren't going well and, you know, how can we manage this decline? And I, I'm, I'm not in that camp, okay? I'm, I'm not interested in managing the decline.
Before we wrap up in just a second here, I, I got to ask you real quick too. I, I just want to give you a little bit of time to explain your answer, but we asked whether you would, in redistricting in, in 2021, keep the five district seats and five at-large seats or not? And you had something to say there about bullet voting, that, that you were concerned about the extent to which that's worked over the last, it'll be 30 years by, by the time we redistrict.
Well, first, I'll, I can probably almost give it to you verbatim. I don't, I don't have a big problem with five district council, council people and five at-large. If we want to go to 10 districts, that would be fine with me too. I, I don't, I don't have a big problem either way on that. What I do have a problem with is bullet voting. Bullet voting was brought in to increase minority representation on the council. At the time it was brought in, we had two black members of the city council. For the last 30 years, we've had two black members of the city council. We currently have two black members of the city council, you know? Whatever this was supposed to accomplish, it hasn't accomplished, you know? And it is such a screwy system. It's just...
Only city in the state that uses it.
Yeah. Well, I think you could probably look at other states as well. You know, I, I just, I just think this is confusing, people don't know how it works, people, you know, give me all five of your votes, you know, give me, which of course I'll have to be saying to people, you know? But that's, I don't know. I think that's crazy. You know, if there, if there are five slots, you ought to vote for five different people and not this bullet voting business.
Anything else you want to? All right. I guess I'll, I'll close with our, our traditional one. People have a choice to make on the February 26 primary and if you make it through that, they'll have a choice to make on the April 2 election. Why you instead of the other guys?
I think I'm the growth candidate. I think I'm the person who has shown a way out of this morass that we're in. I think most everyone else, God bless them, I think they're all great, but I think most of the rest are talking about how to manage our status quo. And it just seems to me that our status quo is not serving us very well. And it is especially not serving people of lower incomes or no incomes. It, it just completely leaves, they, they don't have, they don't have a, a chance, you know? If we have growth, real growth in our city... Can I show you one chart?
Yep.
I, I call this my, I, I call this my report card for Peoria. And that's our assessed value over the last 10 years and it has not grown as much as the rate of inflation, which means our assessed value in real terms has declined. This, this, I think, shows our problem, you know? And I don't want to manage this kind of thing anymore. I think...
And the chart shows that our assessed value, the city's assessed value's grown only 1.26%...
Per year.
Per year for the past 10 years.
For the past 10 years.
While inflation has been 1.69% per year.
I did not prompt these guys, okay?
We're just making sure everybody can see it out there or gets the data otherwise.
That's, that's Peoria's report card. That's not a good report card. We, we, we have to change things. Managing this is, I, I don't think it's an option. I don't know that it's ever been an option, but that's what we've been doing.
All right.
Great.
John Kelly, thank you for coming in and good luck on February 26.
Well, thank you very much for having me.